Let's have the roll call.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Mayor Potem, Reeduper.
President.
Mayor Riggs.
Here.
Councilman Popescu and Leonard are absent. There is a quorum.
Thank you. Our agenda says that we had a closed session. We failed to muster a quorum for a closed session, so the closed session will follow the city council instead of preceding it. So there's no report. And I noticed the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance was assigned to an absent city councilman. So if you'll stand, I will offer the invocation and lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, we thank you for your guidance of our nice little town. We ask that you help us to keep it that way and to honor our residents with respect and with good leadership, and bless us all. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you. This is the time for the public to speak on any items not on the agenda. I have two requests to speak, but they seem to be related to agenda items. But F is the one listed for Mr. Dale Friesen. Please come forward.
I know you guys are busy, but I'm requesting a dismissal of city fees and $400. And what this is related to is my wife was at urgent care, required transportation over to the medical center, and somebody dialed 911, and that should have not happened. But one of two things should have happened. Either the caller or the operator should have asked, "Is this an emergency?" No, it's not an emergency. She needed non-emergency ambulance transport. Instead, they sent paramedics. Well, she didn't need paramedics because she was under the care of physicians. So if the operator would have said, "What is the nature? Is this an emergency?" No. "Do you need paramedics?" No, she's under the care of physicians. So they sent paramedics over, and risk management has refused to pay that portion of it. And I don't see why I should have to pay for that since it's an error either in the person calling 911, who should have never called 911 in the first place, should have just called for non-emergency transport, or the operator should have been able to assess, "Is this an emergency? Do you need paramedics?" And we've been trying to get this resolved as of 1:00 this afternoon. My wife was told they will send this to collections. So this is what I'm asking for. I don't know if you guys have the... You guys, I'm sorry. The city council has the authority to dismiss it or guide me in what my next step should be.
Now, one of the difficulties with California laws, there's something called the Brown Act. It was passed by one of the Browns. It's not related to Jerry. He's not the fount of all bad things named Brown. It's called a sunshine law, and it requires things to be agendized. And I think you're aware that, you know, if it's not on the agenda, we can't actually deal with it.
Right.
So we're forbidden to act upon what you've said. We can ask clarification. We can make general comments, and there are some limitations even on that, but...
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Is the $400 is coming from the AMR or...
It isn't... No, it's not. It's a city fee. It's a city fee, and that's why risk management refuses to pay it.
Maybe the fire chief can address this. This is probably something that could probably... You'd probably have to talk to either the fire chief or the city manager or his office.
It sounds like it's the city fee probably for a non-resident. Do you live in the city?
No.
So, yeah, I believe that's the fee for paramedic response to a non-resident. In the case of urgent care, is where you were at?
Yes.
Sometimes they'll even call AMR in an appropriate fashion, but their dispatch goes through a decision tree, and if there's certain criteria, then they pass it on to Confire Dispatch Center. I can't say what happened in your case. Maybe they did dial 911, just as you say. I don't know. But there are times I am aware of where they'll even go through AMR direct, yet their dispatch kind of goes through an EMD decision tree, and there's certain responses in that which would trigger an activation of the...
So they should have asked if it was an emergency then?
Well, they have a whole decision tree question which would be more specific than, "Is this an emergency?" General to signs and symptoms and chief complaints and things like that.
Right, but if they were asking for ambulance transport only, there was no need for a paramedic to be sent?
Boy, I guess I can't say what happened in your particular case. I'm just describing how the system works. So certainly I can't without knowing how the facility could obviously give you more information of what they did. I couldn't speak to that, but I can describe how the system works.
And so...
Can someone describe to me the process for collecting these fees?
So we send it... We have a billing agency that's not here in the city. It's a third-party biller that sends the billing.
So when there's a number to be called, this is the one that we're calling, and that's the one that's up in Sacramento or wherever, correct?
Yeah, sometimes they'll send it back down to here for general. So you may have talked to staff here in the city. They're kind of a general collection, and then they'll forward things sometimes for more specific questions. Because we do have a membership program that people pay a nominal fee, and then they aren't subject to that charge. It's more of a resident-based. For that urgent care specifically, we have discussed with them a business membership for that very reason, so their pages aren't subject to that. However, they haven't elected to pursue that discussion with us.
Do we not have a visitors' membership level, or did we decline to offer that?
The resolution actually does provide for non-resident membership for specifically. In theory, someone that's here on a regular basis, because we do find our community is people that work and volunteer and spend a large percentage of their life here in our community. So there is a non-resident membership. I'd have to pull it out just to remember the exact language in the resolution that would cover people that actually spend a lot of time in our community. I don't know if that's your case or not.
And that's available after the first infraction, and it defrays... For the cost of the nominal membership, it defrays the expense of the call.
Yeah, that's something the council wanted. I guess they, when it was passed, they said, "This is kind of like a one-time free." Basically, if you would pursue the membership, the city would waive that. They waived that fee, assuming that there's many people that don't, even though we've got the word out, you know, from time to time. They're not aware of the program.
I'm sorry. I'm lost. Membership in what?
Well, there's a... If you're a resident of Loma Linda and you don't want to be subject to a $300 fee, the resident fee for a paramedic visit, then you can pay a membership fee on an annual basis, and that covers you. It's like a subscription to the paramedic service.
But you have to be a resident of Loma Linda.
But that's for the residents program. For visitors, there's also a fee program, and I don't...
Well, it's not just a visitor. It's a non-resident. People that are in our community on a regular basis. I mean, there's people that work in our institutions and are here a lot, and I think that's what the council put that provision in.
Do you recall the fee for that?
$48.
$48?
It might be a little more for the non-residents, say $60.
This is for somebody that's going to urgent care often, and that this situation would come up repeatedly?
Yeah. So it's a... That would amount to about an 85% discount if you chose to pursue that approach.
You could do it retroactively like this.
Yeah, for the first time, for the first infraction, for the first... Not infraction, but for the first service.
The theory there was, okay, the second time, you can't say you didn't know because you didn't know. So the first time, okay, you're not aware of the program, and so there is some latitude to work retroactively.
So you can retroactively pay the whatever this is?
I'm sorry. I'm lost. If you're not asking for the paramedic, you don't want the paramedic. If it's an ambulance transport, then risk management pays for that. If they're sending the paramedic and it's not asked for, why should I have to pay for a membership to retroactive to...
So what I think, what I think his complaint might be with Confire, but his complaint actually starts with the doctor's office. You mean the doctor? She was in the doctor's?
She was in urgent care, so she was under the care of physicians.
The question is, what did the doctor say on the phone that he made phone calls?
I don't even know that it was a doctor that...
Well, the doctor doesn't even make the phone call.
Not even a doctor who made the call.
Whoever, the nurse, the janitor, whoever made the phone call.
Right, exactly. And I don't know what that was.
Somebody made a phone call. And whether or not the phone call is appropriate, somebody made that. And then they made it to the dispatching center for their call and fire department, which is called Confire. And then they made a determination, and...
So it shouldn't have been a 911 call then, probably?
I agree with you. It sounds like an entirely convoluted and complex situation, so I'm with you on that. And I understand that since it's not an agendized item, we can't take action tonight.
Yeah, sorry.
If it was an agendized item, is there some action we can even take?
I will recommend that he would talk to Chief Benders in the meantime, and maybe you can... Chief Benders right there.
At another time?
Because mistakes do happen, and there's got to be some flexibility without opening up Pandora's box.
So what I have authorization to do is a couple of things, is offer the resident or non-resident membership, or if there's a payability, we have a clause which I can reduce it in half. If the council is looking at complete waiver of 100%, like Dr. Daley asked, if we agendize this, could we not do that? I think that's your question. Is that...
Yeah, that's my question. Do we have the authority to do that?
Not today.
I think if you agendized it, you would...
I'm trying to prepare for should this come up again. I'm just curious because it is... I can understand how those kinds of mistakes could be made.
Thank you.
And yet you also understand that we have to be careful of trying to micromanage different elements of the city, or everybody's going to be in here with a story to reduce their water bill or electrical bill or whatever.
Well, kind of my big point was if it's a residence, I understand. You send the paramedics to the residence. They stabilize the patient until the ambulance gets there. But when she's under the care of physicians, it doesn't make sense.
I'm kind of taking a different position, and I'm not trying to shirk.
I'm not trying to shirk any responsibility, but I'm not really certain that it really starts here with the city. And what I'm getting at is what you're... She was at an urgent care at a facility, and somebody made a phone call. So potentially, you have a complaint with how that was happened, how that was handled with that private entity there. And maybe it was handled appropriately, maybe it wasn't. The next level was the dispatching center, which is called Confire, which handles fire dispatch for a number of agencies throughout the county here. Maybe that was handled inappropriately, maybe it was not. And I think you kind of have to start with those first. And then if you find out that, no, the person who called said, "I just want a transport." And when you find out that Confire says, "Well, we sent a transport, but whatever this happened." I mean, if you actually get to a point where it has to do with our fee, see, I'm not sure that our fee really is the issue here because it sounds like something wrong happened before it even got to a city standpoint. Does that make sense?
But if that gets resolved, who's going to pay the fee? That's ultimately the question.
Well, ultimately, with any civil action with anybody, I mean, you would file a complaint. You would ask them to pay the fee. You would ask them to take care of it. I'm pretty sure if you've taken those steps, and once we know if there was indeed a problem or what the recommendation was or whatever happened, I mean, then we could... Our department heads can make those decisions. I don't know that it has to get here yet unless he wasn't happy with the department head's decision, and then it would escalate to a council level question. But I'm confident that we have an excellent fire chief and an excellent city manager, and I'm pretty sure they could probably work with you and resolve this. Whereas right now, without this being on the agenda, we don't have the authority to really help you at this point.
So just contact you and make an appointment at a...
Yeah, you can contact myself, and I guess what Dr. Daley brings up a good point, authority to waive in general. I mean, we work very liberally with the rules you gave us to work with, which is why I don't think you've ever heard this in city council. But me waiving 100% isn't one of those rules, so I would say we work very liberally with what we've been provided with. So I would certainly need to make sure I have that authority to work at that kind of a level in these circumstances with the council.
I have a question about the, like I said, about the collection process. Now, we send it to a billing company, right? Because we don't... We're not a billing company. The city only bills for water and various fines and things like that. So we send it to a billing company. Does that billing company have authorization to send it to, quote, "collections"? Or is that billing company the collecting company?
Boy, you're... No, we have not pursued aggressive attitude of aggressive collections. So it would have to come back to the city to deal with in the collections.
I wish I would have known that. I wouldn't have paid mine.
I was asked the question, council member.
Right. In all seriousness, I had a medical aid incident. The way it's set up is that you can either opt into this program beforehand, and you pay the $48 or whatever it is, and you get unlimited paramedic visits. The reason behind all this is that because we're a city of advanced age to some degree, our firemen spend a lot of time on medical aid and medical response calls. So there was... I'm assuming this was before my time, though, but you tell me if I'm wrong, if I'm getting off track here.
You headed the right way.
But there are some repeat visitors or clientele that are continually calling. And sometimes they maybe just need, you know, somebody to talk to or things like that. And so consistently, I think the idea was to come up with a way to either recover those costs or prevent those repeated runs out to, you know, some whatever. So, but I personally had a medical issue at my house a couple of years ago where, you know, I wasn't... I don't expect the paramedics to come to my house, so I wouldn't buy into this program because I don't think I need it.
Right.
But all of a sudden, they had to show up for a legitimate reason, and I got a bill. But the way the program is set up is that first time, you have the option to, at that point, opt in, and then you're good for the rest of the year. Either pay the couple hundred dollar fee or opt into the program that first time. So I paid my $48, and I opted into the program. It was actually my father that had a cardiac event at my house. But that's just kind of the way it is. But it sounds to me like somebody at this office either didn't make the right call or something got translated wrong, and now you're getting the bill for it. But I really believe that they'll be able to resolve this for you, and if not, then that's something you would take up your little with us.
I think you sense that we're sensitive to the dilemma.
Yeah.
It's a matter of figuring out how it can most appropriately be resolved.
It seems like it'd be a recurring thing that would happen.
Well, we go to urgent care quite a bit, and so their staff, I think, should be fairly included into how they access the system. So I'm wondering if it isn't just that normal decision tree, whatever question the dispatcher answers triggers, okay, you get this response. So whether you feel like it did or it didn't, or whatever be the circumstances, that could have been the case, so...
Okay. I mean, I don't know how to find out the detail of that conversation, so I just make a meeting with you and we discuss that.
That's actually something that he can find out. You may not be able to find out, but he can listen to phone calls and transcripts and whatever.
Okay. Sorry to take up so much time.
Yeah, 2:55, 2:56. Your three minutes are up. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Public comment? No takers. Okay. We'll go to our scheduled items. Number one, public hearing, Council Bill R-2015-20, approving the annual report and assessments for landscape maintenance. These are reports contained in our packets. Do you guys need to hear a formal report?
I don't need a report, but I've got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Couple of questions. The assessment, total of the assessments was significantly below the expenditures.
Yes.
And then I looked at this is based on legislation from 1972. That's how the annual assessments were established. And we have another item coming up where we're going to see a similar challenge with the same legislation. It seems to me that if this is an ongoing issue, that the assessments are too low, and we don't want to get to too high. But in this case, it's a substantial difference. Is there a fix to that problem?
Yes, is to go back to the voter and ask the homeowner in this district to increase the fee.
Increase the fees?
Yes.
Good luck with that one. Is it one of those things where we put up polling booths and have everybody go down and vote? Or is it where you send out a letter that says, "Please send this in if you want to pay more"?
Oh, you're... He with the Willdans Financial Services.
Good evening, council members. Jose Omatelto with Willdan Financial. It is what's called a Prop 218 ballot, and that requires it's a mail-in ballot of the affected owners within the district.
And would it be counted by the number of no votes compared to the total set out or by the number of yes votes divided by the total number of votes?
Number of yes votes divided by the total number of votes, and those are of the ballots received.
Okay.
So it's a...
So otherwise, we just keep tapping our general fund to make up the differences every year?
Yes. Many cities are in your position where they're looking at evaluating Prop 218, reengineering in relation to declining service. A lot of cities are opting to reduce service and those sorts of things as opposed to continuing to maintain at a certain standard or provide a certain amount of amenities.
So the problem is with the formula in the Landscape and Lighting Act of '72.
The problem is lack of inflationary adjustment.
Correct. It's when the district was formed, at the time it was formed, there was no inflationary adjustment or no allowance for an increase.
So this would just continue to grow with time unless we are able to go to the voters and resolve it?
Correct. As your costs continue to increase to provide the relative service, you'll have either maintain the same amount or have an increasing delta in general fund revenue.
Okay. My other question is, I understand that this is for maintenance of existing streetlights and stoplights. This has nothing to do, however, with the replacement of streetlights that we were engaged in, or it does?
Yes, it does. For streetlight assistance, yes, it does.
So the estimated expenditures, I guess they're not estimated, the expenditures that you've outlined here, does that include replacement of more streetlights?
Yes. Yes.
And are we convinced we can afford that right now?
Replacing the light bulb, not the pole itself.
All right. Well, but we were replacing the whole light. We were...
That time, we used the grant money. We used the grant money.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question. That was my recollection.
Yes, we used the grant money to redo an LED light, yes.
And that grant money is out, so we've got the streetlights we've got at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In general, the maintenance that's covered within these districts is for when bulbs go out or there's knockdowns for any type of accidents or other issues that...
Is the maintenance of LED lights higher than the old traditional lights? Because I see some of these with individual LED lights out, and they look like black spots.
They are initially more expensive to put in. They last longer. It depends on what type of LED bulb and Cobra you go with. They vary dramatically. There are some that do have those individual bulbs, and there's some that are much larger, so...
But it's the same on electricity, so...
Now, how do we want to spend our money saving electricity or buying extra bulbs? Okay, I understand. So when I look at a streetlight and it's got these black holes in it with burnout bulbs, you've got to do the whole thing, which is much more expensive. Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I try to learn something every week here, too. Thank you. I will move council...
Well, no. Do I have to do three separate public hearings? Okay, public hearing number one. Please come forward if you want to talk about the landscape maintenance district number one. No takers. Close the public hearing. Now, what's your motion?
I move Council Bill R-2015-20.
Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none. That's approved unanimously. Item number two, we already talked about from the dais. Report and assessment for streetlight benefit assessment district. Okay, opening the public hearing. Come forward, one. Come forward, all. Okay, nobody. Close the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
I move Council Bill R-2015-21.
Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? Okay, hearing none. That's three yes votes. We unanimously approve that. Item number three. This is a separate thing. Council Bill R-2015-25, approving the economic incentive agreement between the city and Anxter.
Is there a presentation?
Yes. More of the same? You guys can move it and shut him up fast. No takers. Okay, go for it.
We'll keep it quick. This is an economic incentive agreement similar to what we had with Mansfield. With Anxter, we have had this in place in one form or another for about seven years. Previously, this was funded through the Redevelopment Agency. That agreement had topped out as far as the amount of money that was involved in the incentive. And now we are reentering that agreement at a 40% incentive with 60% staying with the city. Anxter is a large electronics wholesaler and retailer, and their sales for Southern California exclusive of San Diego County are based in Loma Linda Corporate Business Center. Any questions?
Nope. Okay, public hearing.
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Why 40%? How did we arrive at that?
Arm wrestled. It was...
Did we win or lose?
I think we won. Anxter is, you know, is a significant component of our sales tax revenues. You can see in the staff report. You know, by them being located in the city, it does, you know, it does cause a little inconvenience for them. And, you know, so there was, there is some advantage to us staying in the city. And actually, we started out at 50/50, and we got it to 40/60. So I think we came out ahead.
So you view this as a win-win situation then?
Yes.
They could go anywhere else.
They do have the opportunity to go anywhere else. However, they will not get any sales tax incentive because you can't poach businesses from other cities. So there is an incentive there for us to retain them.
And in the report, when you say it is estimated that there will be between 10 and 15 full-time positions created in the city, we're talking about Anxter employees, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that answers my questions.
Okay, public hearing. Come forward. Another exciting topic. Okay, we provided all you needed, so no more. What's your pleasure?
You got to state the bill number?
Thank you. Microphone?
Okay. I will move Council Bill R-2015-25, approving the economic incentive agreement between the city and Anxter.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? That's three yes votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
We have the consent calendar, and I believe because we did not have a preceding closed session, we need to pull some of the items. Which items would we pull for that for consideration after the closed session? Would we pull for that, for consideration after the closed session?
That's in, that's under new business.
It's in new business?
Yeah, I think, I think we're good.
Okay, is the consent calendar acceptable?
I've got a couple of questions on the demands register.
Okay.
And a simple question on twelve.
Go ahead.
I had a question about number eight.
Okay, go with number four.
Okay. There was a series of checks for Narisco, I'm probably Narcisco, Valdivinos Golden West, is that landscaping? Are these contractors for landscaping?
Yes, sir. It's our.
I thought that our Public Works did our landscaping.
No.
This is a special project.
No, this is for the, uh, the landscape assessment district. We use a contractor to maintain our landscape assessment district.
Okay, and so then I see just above that, there's, uh, long more repairs that we did. So we have, we do some of our own.
Oh, yes, the the city park, the city, the city crew did maintain our, all the city park, we moved the park, yes.
All right. And the difference is because?
I don't have enough staff, so we contract out for the landscape assessment district.
Okay.
Is that, is that something you were doing before, or is it now even more amplified because we are, or we don't have the jail workers here anymore?
We do, we do more.
In favor of?
Don't use the jail.
I'm in favor of not having them do it. Been my position for a long time.
You just turned your.
Yeah, we're using, we're using, we use Public Works crew, yeah.
And then, uh, on the next page, uh, San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Um, I, I'm, how many officers? Because we had fewer and then we brought more on and then I'm unclear as to whether we kept the extras.
Yes, this is, this is the monthly bill from from the county sheriff, which include the forty, forty hours deputy additional, yes.
Okay, so how many deputies do we have at a time? Well, no, we don't have.
I'm looking, I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Captain. Two and three deputy.
And was, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, does this incorporate the increase that we had talked about?
Yes. Yes, we already started, yes. We started mid-year, yes, sir.
All right. All right. Completes my questions on the demands register.
And you have question number eight, I can explain. At the last city council meeting.
Yes.
Uh, we, we approve it, but I forgot to mention that we have to award the contract and that's my mistake, so we have to come back here and ask for award.
And I just, I just want to clarify that because there was questions on the dais before about that, so.
Yes, it's just a.
Okay, I'm good with it. I will move the consent calendar if.
Um, I'm just.
Oh, sorry.
Question on twelve. Uh, I'm just curious to know where these two locations are for the drive-through car wash in the medical office building.
Okay, the drive-through car wash is on Redlands Boulevard, west of Mountain View.
Sorry, next to Enterprise Car Rattle on Redlands Boulevard.
Oh, really? And this will just be an independent car wash? Similar to the others that are on Redlands Boulevard?
Correct.
And the medical office building?
This is at the, the southwest corner of Newport and and, uh, and Barton Road, right by the Newport, the post office. This is the one that we have, we can have a hard time getting driveway in and out.
Because that post office is already a problem.
Yeah, and this is what, this is the property that, the, the post office, you can see is further in the back of the property. They subdivided the land and sold the, the front piece.
To a medical office building.
Yes, to the doctor, orthopedic doc surgeon and.
But that's going to be a mess because, uh, it, all of the ingress and egress is right on a corner.
That's why they're spending twenty-seven thousand on a, on an environmental analysis that that is not looking good.
Now, my.
Correct, that's why, uh, this is for environmental assessment.
No, no, I understand.
Before we get too far down the rabbit.
Yeah, no, and I understand that, but, um, just let me ask a question because, even though I know I'm early. This issue of ingress and egress to the post office came up back when the bill, post office was built. And my recollection is we were told that since this was federal property, we had no jurisdiction over it. Now, with a, uh, a new building that's in front of the post office that's not federal, uh, do they get the grandfather in under the federal?
No, sir.
So we've got an interesting debate in front of us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I already have with the applicant, so you go in here, have an EFO.
We'll get an EFO or he will? Because he laughs.
You know, we've been working with the applicant for the better part of nine months to get to this point where there may be something that we can actually start looking at. It's going to be a very complicated project.
Yeah, it's going to be a complicated debate. Okay.
Okay, so there was a motion for the consent calendar, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
For item number nine, uh, the completion of Seward Street project, I would like to let you know that this project has been awarded Project of the Year from the American Society of Civil Engineer, San Bernardino and Riverside County, uh, uh, branch. And I nominated Ken Brier to be Engineering of the Year and he he received.
Oh, right on, yeah.
So, just let you know, we're going to have a, a gala, uh, on April the, I mean, June the twenty-fourth at Riverside Convention Center. So let's.
Where Ken will be recognized?
Yes.
And the project?
Yes.
Very good. It came out very nice, I have to say.
I'd like to point out that there were comments made from this dais before that project was approved, that it would be ugly and an offense to all the visitors in town.
Changed your mind now.
And that opinion did not prevail.
And I would like to point out, I will bring it back at the next city council meeting, uh, because we had, we end, the city ended up spending additional money. And, uh, we need to ask for additional money for the project, but because it's have a conflict and the last time when the council voted on the agreement between the city and university, it was Councilman Duper, Councilman Daly and Councilman Papescu. So I have to wait until Councilman Papescu come back and bring it back for this.
Previous mayor? Okay, so you ready for the vote? Okay, those in favor of the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it's unanimous, it's passed. New business number fifteen. And we'll open the housing authority for the fun of considering this, it's a joint meeting.
So, C- Councilman, you want to do a, um, the closed session first on the item fifteen? Jay?
Well.
How is it, you, how you want it?
It's actually fifteen A, or I'm sorry, C A. The closed session.
C and A?
Yes, so we didn't conduct the closed session that's related to item fifteen. And so if you wanted to adjourn to closed session to complete that before you go forward with, uh, fifteen, that might be appropriate.
Okay, so the entire item fifteen is not considered until we have the closed session?
I can, can I recommend that at least we hear the comment from, uh, from the budget committee? Recommendation first because, uh, uh, Gary Nelson is here, we can, this way he doesn't wait for rest of, you can rec, listen to recommendation.
Yeah, we can do that. So, come forward.
So the Loma Linda Budget Committee, um, has reviewed the annual budget along with, uh, I think we had a workshop with city council as well. And our recommendations are, I'll give you the short version, not the long version. Unless you like the long version. No, okay. The budget committee expects a balanced and sustainable financial position maintained in the budget. While maintaining a balanced budget, sustainable aspects of the budget should be implemented. There's one specifically we are talking about is the main concern of the committee is the unrecorded liability and future cost of capital equipment replacement. So we are recommending, and this is the fourteenth year that we have recommended this, that a schedule of accrued and accruing capital equipment costs be created to support the capital equipment replacement fund. And we recommend that the, anything that has a purchase price in excess of seventy thousand dollars, uh, be included in this, this fund. The classic example is, um, fire engines that need to be replaced and we haven't accrued for that expense. I mean, we kind of know the life of the fire engine and yet, uh, you know, it comes down to a fairly large expenditure. The only concerns that we had were, um, that we had is the drought restrictions and potential non-performance penalties in the city. And that's not budgeted. And we also had a concern about, uh, the new Gatsby accounting standards in reporting for the unfunded pension liability. In conclusion, the, um, we'd like to state that we are very, uh, thankful to this, uh, staff, city manager and the council. And believe that Loma Linda is in a better position than most cities in California. And, um, that's the, the short version. So, we, I think that we've had a discussion for fourteen years and we would really encourage that to be included in the budget going forward, so we don't have to repeat that request again.
No, what, what happening is, is, uh, before we didn't even have the equipment replacement program. So, since I've been the city manager, I, I established that equipment replacement program, so now it's there. So what we need to do next is, next year, we plan to hire a consultant to help us with, go back and see the inventory of our equipment. And then look at how old it, they are and and when they need to be replaced and start doing that and then set the money aside to replace those equipment.
Yeah, and the, the budget committee doesn't expect it to be funded all at once, we would just like to see the actual, and that, and it's good to hear that you're actually planning on doing that, because we do think that it needs to be addressed. And it doesn't have to be funded the first year, but at least there be a plan set forth so that at some point the city funds every year these capital expenditures that will need to occur in the future.
Uh, is what you're describing basically the same as a depreciation account?
It is.
And, uh, do we use a depreciation system for any of our, uh, equipment, major equipment and so forth?
Governmental accounting for the general fund, we don't depreciate general fund assets as far as just on a regular basis. We do for the enterprise funds because they're full accrual accounting, but we don't set that money aside. We, we record the entry as a depreciation and accumulated depreciation on those equipments.
And so when we need to replace the equipment, whatever it is, how does that work?
It's just we do the purchase, then we set up the asset.
From what fund?
Usually it would be the sewer or the water fund or the Loma Linda Connected Community, those, they, they purchase the asset and it gets set up as an asset and then through, for the life of the asset, we depreciate it.
For, for example, for the water fund, for tonight, we have to purchase equipment for the water department, the, the truck that you mentioned earlier. Is, is the money, because it's, it's water, the money come from water fund. And and even though we didn't have a category for equipment replacement, we always have reserve to be able to make sure that we can replace the truck, the wells, the motors, those are big ticket item, the, the, you know, so. Yes, we do have that.
So if you have to replace one of the trucks for Public Works?
Yes.
How does that work?
If, if a general fund, then over seventy thousand dollar, then we have to do this, this depreciation fund, yes. That's why, that's why I did talk to Jay, we picked seventy to seventy-five thousand dollar. Because for the truck, the twenty-five thousand dollar, like the pickup F one fifty, it costs about between twenty, twenty-three and twenty-five thousand dollar, we don't need to do depreciation.
It's below the threshold.
Yes, sir. So seventy, seventy-five is good.
And so when we bring, when you bring requests for, uh, equipment replacement over seventy thousand dollars, then you would bring an accounting of the sources of funding?
Correct, correct, that's, that's why if you look in the five-year CAP, uh, on the fleet, the first page is number one is utility distribution replacing nineteen eighty-five service truck. Right behind it, again, the same thing, the same description, but they have funding source, where the money coming from.
Page or you want?
Fifteen, fourteen and fifteen. So fourteen is, is a summary and fifteen is more detail of where the money coming from, which fund. Because a lot of time that we do capital improvement project, there's more than one funding source to do the project, so.
And so when you talk about concern about sustainability and funding these, uh, how did you put it?
It's, it's the major.
Unrecorded liability, is this what we're talking about?
No, that's separate, that actually has to do with pensions and that type of thing.
Ah.
Uh, this is actually talking about, um, similar to what you would do in non-governmental accounting is the depreciation fund and setting aside the funds. Where I, we're encouraging, even though it's not specifically part of governmental accounting, that we have a specific fund and we fund it not just based upon, you know, a tr, year-end transfer, but actually something that we budget for. And it appears that the city is going to, to do that for next year's budget and do a, bringing a consultant. That, that second portion is just a change in the way governmental accounting is recorded. And, um.
They have to do it in their own special way.
Yes, but it's also governmental accounting doesn't always fully disclose all the liabilities. And this is taking a step where more of the liabilities are included. And so we're concerned not knowing what that amount is, um.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
For example, the federal government doesn't disclose, you know, Medicare Part D, what the unfunded portion of that, it's like twenty-two trillion dollars. But it's not included in the current deficit. Because they don't use GAAP accounting.
Can somebody define for me, I mean, I understand the words, but somebody help me understand, because there's references in here to the rainy day fund. I've got one of those, but two, but I don't think we necessarily use it in.
Is, is a reserve.
We should, we should call at this point, the rainy day fund should be called a dry day fund because it's supposed to be a bad thing.
It's a reserve account, yes. That's the reserves of the city and it should probably have been called the reserves.
And is there a formula that helps us determine how much should be in that fund or is it, uh, kind of finger to the wind?
There's, there's a standard with most cities, however, we're way above most cities.
Gatsby sets a standard, um, it's generally like twenty-five percent. So, um, we, council can elect to make it whatever percentage they would desire.
Twenty-five percent of?
Of your annual expenditures.
Of your annual expenditures, okay.
So it focuses right now on the general fund. And there was, uh, a couple of years back, Gatsby did change the labeling of your fund balance, so you have different categories and one is committed where that's where we assign the rainy day fund.
Yeah.
And it takes an act of council to actually go and dip into that reserve. So we would have to bring any items.
What's our percentage?
Right now, we have about.
We're actually, so the standard is at twenty-five and we're at sixty-two?
We have been.
Yes.
For a long time.
And, and the only reason we're down to sixty-two is because we run a whole bunch of money through for the, for the, uh, tax sharing plan.
I, I think that we ought to start giving raises to the city manager and the finance manager and.
Yeah.
Last year, you did take the action.
Start with employees first.
I think, I think we should give rebates to the taxpayers.
Well, the, the budget committee actually, and it's not one of the details I went into, is, um, saying that the things that were taken away from the employee should be given back first.
But that's already started.
That is already started, yes.
It's started, but we haven't completed it yet.
And once those things are completed, then, then we would be supportive of other actions.
Including tax rebates?
That would be great if we got to that point, yes.
We, we were commenting before we came out here that, uh, we thought that the, that the budget report recommendations was done very well, very well. So, take our commendations or at least take my commendations. So take our commendations, or at least take my commendations back to the budget committee. You guys are doing good, good work.
Jay wrote most of this and so I, I will let them know.
I think the point, the point is that you guys are the ones that set the budget, you and the staff, and, and you guys are the ones that have saved the money and you're the ones that have done this for many, many years. You guys specifically. So we, you know, really, we're nothing in this process, so.
Yeah, I, I really do appreciate the, the budget committee for working with us and, and I, this is my seven years and it's been, it's been very good. Thank you.
Well, it's much easier to work on this budget committee than one like San Bernardino or something like that. Jarvis made it fairly easy for us.
Yeah, but I think their job would be very easy, they have no money to deal with, so it's, you know, it'd be done in a couple of minutes.
Can you set a negative reserve?
Yeah. That concludes my report unless there's any other questions.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I'd like to deal with a couple of the agendas before we go into closed session. Because the people who've waited here all evening are just, they've been waiting the whole time for the Public Financing Authority agenda? Everybody's excited about it. Okay, are there any items to be added or deleted on the Public Financing Authority?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda, which means any items other than the minutes? Because the entire agenda is the minutes. Okay. No comments, so what's your pleasure on the minutes?
I'll move the minutes.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved, that meeting is adjourned. Next is... Where did it go? You sit here for a while and everything disappears. The next is, is, no, the Housing Authority we have to save because it's part of the closed session. So it's the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any non-agenda items? Seeing no takers, what's your pleasure on the consent calendar?
Move it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's unanimously approved, that meeting is adjourned. Now we will repair two chambers for our closed session. It did not occur at five-thirty. If you want to stay for the whole thing, there's an undetermined amount of time we'll spend in closed session and we'll come back and consider item number fifteen. So be warned if you're here for the long haul, hang around.
And Mr. Mayor, just for the public information, items C, A is what we're going into closed session to discuss, which is labor negotiations. CB and CC will be held at a future date and I'm recommending that the-
No, 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 no.
Hold on.
You can do B. Oh, yes, the B, do it tonight.
Okay, so we, we-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
City manager would like to do his evaluation tonight as well, so that will take place tonight if, if that's the pleasure of the council. But the other item, the public employee discipline matter, that, I'm recommending that you continue that to a date when the entire council will be present. My understanding is that that would be July fourteenth. If you all plan to be there then?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Yeah, that-
And we don't know about the other two.
It's a tough day, but it'll work.
Well, they're gone tonight, so it's more likely they'll be here later.
Well, they'll, we'll at least have a quorum that we can continue it from that date. So let's, I guess, hold that over to a date certain, July fourteen, and if we don't have all five, we'll have to extend it from that point.
Yes.
Okay.
So it'll be seven o'clock then on the fourteenth?
It'd be closed session.
Yes, that would be the closed session.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Is there a regular council meeting that night?
Yes.
I don't have it in here.
Well, at the beginning, no. At, at the beginning, we, we only planned to have one council meeting on July on the twenty-eighth. But, but, but since this, this item is urgent, it has to be within one hundred days, so we need to have one.
Twenty-eighth, I won't be here.
Right, so it'll be the fourteenth.
Okay.
And maybe I can eliminate, we, we're supposed to have June, the second meeting in June too, so we might not need it. I will look into it. June, uh-
I've got lots of homework to do, so.
Twenty-third.
So, okay, so we will now go to closed session. Okay.